I call this meeting board of board trustees for the town of Tallahassee. Item number one is public forum for the town. Anyone here for public forum? Item number two, discussion and action on employee handbook. Personnel policy and procedure starts.
I make a motion to revise the town of Tallahassee employee handbook sections as follows. Jury duty, full-time employees, employee files, employees communication, employees safety, sick leave, vacation and benefits, time sheets, and case give.
I second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? I might discuss. You just made a motion to change all this or what?
To add, mostly it's to add things that are not in our handbooks and make it more current and to define.
Because we can only do one at a time.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
These are the ones that are on here, isn't it?
Yes, the ones at the top, yeah. Then we just, then number three starts like a full-time. Just to explain what full-time is because in our Tallahassee handbook it does not specify.
Bailey, yes.
Yes.
Wes. Item number three, discussion and action on full-time. Subject: Full-time.
In the Tallahassee handbook, it's just like said, it specifies full-time. I make the motion.
Well, what do you want to be, full-time?
I'm not saying that.
Okay, yeah.
Labor Department looks everything up.
This is what I'm.
Yeah, I'm talking this.
Our handbook doesn't identify full-time. Basically, basically what I'm saying, I'm going to make a motion to identify a person employed by the town of Tallahassee for an indefinite time and typically works a regular schedule of at least forty hours per week would be considered full-time.
I second. Wait, is that a motion?
Yes.
I second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Votes?
Now look, we got a session.
No one said anything.
We guess we got discussion. And we're gonna have discussion.
Don't talk to me like that.
Don't tell me we're not gonna have a discussion.
I didn't tell you that.
You said vote.
The grace of God. What? Yes.
Is there a state law that says, that defines that?
That's what I've had for right now, CJ.
It's like it's thirty-two hours.
It's less than.
Anything over thirty-two hours is full-time.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to know the explanation before you.
The thing is, we can say forty hours is.
You can write state law.
Right, but we can say, okay.
Thirty-two hours applies to benefits.
Benefits.
And there can allow.
But we can call full-time here forty hours if we want to.
Yeah.
But I think if you hit, if, if state has got a thirty-two hour thing and says if you're working more than, if you're working thirty-two consecutive hours in a week, there's also that too, that you get, you're entitled to receive benefits.
Full benefits.
Basically, it's full-time employee.
Well, full-time and benefits and, and, and different things, it falls under different, you know, it's like, like me and young, uh, type of insurance after ninety days, you, you know, give me insurance, but different categories.
That was awesome change. That's a favor law. The governor's living around that six, he can find it at Boston Plaza, remember that? In that office.
On the ninety days, we had changed that at one point. I don't know yet, but it's been a while.
When we've been doing our part time, we said nothing over twenty-nine.
Yeah, yeah, like you said, nothing over twenty-nine. I thought everybody, I thought people knew why, so I accepted that and I never questioned it.
Forty hours, forty hours is what skills use. I mean, that's considered full-time. But as far as having to provide benefits, it's less than forty.
Yes, I'll leave the benefits that, yes.
With his insurance.
All I'm talking here is to identify what the town can consider a full-time. I'm not talking about benefits right now, I'm just talking about the, to define the full-time status as well, I don't talk very good.
And that's what we're working on now anyway.
But under the eyes.
We're working.
But I'm afraid.
It's just not stated in our handbook.
I'm afraid, but under the eyes of the law, they consider anything over thirty-two full-time.
Whether you like it or not.
Okay, but now hey.
Well, excuse me, the county schools get.
Walmart dropped their people down to thirty-eight hours, so they don't have to pay benefits.
So how do you.
And that's, that's the same way.
That's one hundred and forty.
A lot of businesses to, to not give them benefits, orange, is, is less than forty.
I suggest we.
Walmart considered forty hours, full-time. And they'll just, the test was dropped there down to thirty-eight, so they don't have to pay benefits.
We need to mention that too. Okay.
We'll change it later.
See, I can't, I can't work my reserves over a hundred and forty hours a month. That's all I can work my reserves is a hundred and forty hours a month. They cannot go over a hundred and forty hours.
Okay, that's, that's.
It's different for you, the department that needs to be clarifying.
They said anything that I work, anything, any, see, like, we work a hundred and seventy three. I think it's a hundred and seventy, I think it's a hundred and seventy-one. Before it comes, becomes compound or whatever.
I think uniform.
Hundred and sixty-eight or whatever.
Uniform officers, fire and officers, probably, I think they're treated differently.
They're.
There's, when's the by, different.
Well, ours is, instead of a hundred and sixty-eight, it's a hundred and seventy-one. It's really a hundred and seventy-three, I think, seventy-three point five.
And you're.
We're a full-time, say, like, the city guys, they can't go over a hundred and sixty-eight hours a month.
Yeah.
So whatever that figures out.
Well, they're just averaging around here, some of the time, if you twenty-one days to a month, averaged. So.
So ours is.
Because some days.
Ours is.
More than four weeks.
Ours is considered around twenty-eight day work period. In a twenty-eight day work period, you can't work over a hundred and, in, in a twenty-eight day work period, it's a hundred and seventy-one or a hundred and seventy-three, I just have to look for sure, but it falls, it's set up on a twenty-eight day work period.
I thought all of them were anything.
I think for the, just for the.
I'd find.
I'd find. Clarification of it, we need to go ahead and do a forty-hour work week proceeding forward.
Can I just say that we found out that we are, that we could just bring it back on the.
And then bring it back in and just like, right now, nothing there.
But all these years, and this is never specified, how many hours you.
Let's get something there and then.
Hey, help, help me with the process here, so I can understand it. We're gonna have to approve the handbook as a whole, right?
No.
Okay, so we're not going to approve it as a whole?
Not yet.
When do we decide? When it's complete?
After, as we've been revising.
Okay.
He's just doing the section.
So do we come back after we've done the revisions and approve the whole thing?
Yes. We've got to decide upon revisions first of each individual.
So it's not official?
It's not official until.
Until you approve the entire man.
So, the whole thing. Even then, if you find out that that's wrong, you can make an addendum to this?
Yes.
So, because we're not actually putting this into the handbook yet.
Right. Chipping away.
We're paying for.
But even if you vote on it, that's an entire manual, and then you find out that you need to adjust something, it's an addendum to it then instead of a revision.
And even if the handbook here states that at the very first couple of pages that it revised, and it does talk about it.
I will, I will probably get some of the data information.
Anything would be.
Most of the books are outdated back here that I found, we'll get to see if I can get the current one.
We're, are we on the.
We have a discussion.
Okay.
Discussion. Vote. Bailey, yes.
Yes.
Item number four, discussion and action on employee five.
Number four, I make a motion to have all personal records include applications, resume, living for I-9 criminal backgrounds, emergency information sheets, receipts of revised handbook forms, benefit enrollment and waiver forms, copies and verifications of certifications, registrations, license and degree, and appropriate records, check job descriptions, performance appraisal, disciplinary or consulting records, recitation, history, training and developing records, and any of the information deemed necessary in your files. We're not current on our files, so.
But I made a motion.
Yes, I made that motion, yes.
I second. So we've got discussions or something, because I have no idea what people's scared. I'm licensed.
You're gonna say something?
Okay. I have no idea. And it should be, if every door is on, you can have all this stuff, they'll have. I don't think. Right, I have a question. When you do a criminal background check on a prospective employee, we don't usually keep that.
All I can, by law, all I can vote is.
Right, and we don't put that in their files, right?
I, I got it in my.
We ever, have never.
I got it in my, all the people that work for me, I have, I have a file that.
All state, all state employees have to have, it's mandatory.
But they were still put into their file.
Yes.
Plus, I don't know, second we didn't do it.
Now, now.
I'm just saying they're not in their file.
Yeah.
They usually were stayed with their applications when they were given to us, and I don't know, I don't know what happened to them after that.
The file was kind of empty.
They took one, probably probably together, but they don't put it right after their.
I remember something where.
It's what as far as, like, in here, it's what as far as, say, I was never sex, one of my guys went to school. Here, I'm talking about. I bring that, they don't include their personnel files.
And that's all together.
I put it somewhere where they never made it to their personnel files.
We can do that.
So, and I mean, this is.
I know.
Over the years, not just recently.
I know.
When I said I was saying over the years.
Yeah. No. Last six or seven years, I think it's more than two decades. So I'm kind of, I'm kind of, I'm kind of all my people. When they go to school, I'll give them this five year, then I'll give them here for the personnel. I think four.
Do you even have any personnel, right, total there?
Yes.
No, personnel, no, maybe shouldn't do something like that. That's over, isn't it?
Well, this is not always going to be applicable for every employee.
That's fine, but it covers, it wasn't taken in here. Some of it may not be taken with that sort of license and this sort of thing. But it's.
Maybe if they do have.
Well, it says, let me just comment about what you, without use today. Because my, is that all they're written, employee?
Yeah.
Well, it says as of October.
Deemed necessary.
Yeah. And if we, if we have a seventh chance, that's.
I think that is.
I mean, or, 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 please have a different license.
Was that a, a motion?
Yes.
Second, yes. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Vote. Bailey, yes.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Item number five, discussion and action on who employees can talk to and concerns.
Shall I make a motion or should I just explain a bit?
Explain.
When I read the handbook, one of the topics that I see, there's a lot of it that either talks to the supervisor or mayor, or doesn't really, I want anybody that is employed with the town of Tallahassee to know that they can talk to any of the board of trustees.
After they go to their supervisor.
Yes, ma'am. And that's what I got down here, that I would like to make a motion to have employees that have concerns, questions, and or issues to speak with their supervisors and or board trustees member. Let them know that we're all here for them.
China's command is supervisors, and then it goes out to commissioners, so I, I don't want to cut out supervisors.
Well, I'll look at, yeah, nobody.
So as then of the and or, we could be supervisors for being board of trustee members. Or.
Well, that's what I have.
No, we have an and or.
Speak with your supervisors. Okay, you can take out the and or. But if, if they come to me, I'm not gonna, well, I'm gonna be sure that they.
The problem sometimes is a problem between that employee and that supervisor. And there needs to be another line of.
Communication.
That why they don't know they can go in there.
But you're right, it does happen.
It could be anything.
I mean, it needs, last night, you need that employee to approach someone else.
We have a motion.
That, I did, that was my motion, and I made a second.
Well, that wasn't.
No, she didn't. We discussed the first.
Yeah, he did the second.
I didn't read that.
The and or in there.
Gotta read it.
Okay, I make a motion to have employees that have concerns, questions, and or issues to speak with their supervisors and board and or board of trustees members.
We have a motion. Second. And a second, any more discussion? Vote. Bailey.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Item number six, discussion and action on jury duty.
Explain what I've found in our book on jury duty, is if an employee has been summoned to jury duty, the town will pay up to one week of jury duty. Some jury duty, we all know, lasts longer than one week. At that time, the town, in the side of the book, it states that they will use vacation time or jury duty leave of absence. I feel without pay. And I feel that if you're on jury duty, you get paid. It's not like, you know, that's just simple.
You're the example, should be paid now.
Right, but it does say in here, so, I make the motion to have employees who are required by due process of law to render jury service or court service during normal working hours shall receive their regular pay for such period. But it does say in here that they show proof that they do have court or jury duty, they need to report that to their supervisor.
And it'll also say there too, that we have the right to protest if that employee is deemed critical to the needs of the town of Tallahassee, that the city has the right.
So with that all in there, that.
But you're not gonna protest.
We have a motion.
I second.
And a second, any more discussion?
Can I add something in there before you guys? Now, some, some employers now, when the judge pays the employee for being on jury duty, that they turn that into their employer. If they're on leave with pay.
Yeah. We have to do that.
But they normally all have to do that.
Turn it into the employer.
The.
What, they get paid for jury.
The employee is on jury duty with pay.
Right.
Okay. Normally, the court pays a token amount to the, to the employee.
Knowledge, yeah.
They turn that into the employer, this employer.
Because they're about to be getting paid.
He's already getting paid.
Right.
Yeah, you know, we're doing.
Yeah.
Is it by law, is it necessarily?
Well, all, all employers require that, that I know of.
I don't know if that's law, but it's standard practice.
No, it wouldn't be law.
It'd be standard practice.
Oh, we put that in the.
Well, you can modify it, right? We're just gonna draw your.
Sorry.
While we were at those.
Is it?
We were.
Put it in.
Okay, we just add it to the next one, we go with this, and let's do that.
We, we put that in the minutes.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Vote. Bailey.
Yes.
Yes.
Item number seven, discussion and action on safety and signage.
With the Tallahassee handbook, they have a lot of good safety programs in this book, but I want to make a motion to require all town Tallahassee employees to attend annual safety work program meetings for employees, visitors, and customers.
We have a motion.
I second.
Explain.
Now, discussion.
Explain that.
Oh, when we go further, okay, I thought I did.
I don't, I mean, yeah.
The, the town has a lot of safety programs in place, but as far as bulletin boards, how to handle customers or, or visitors in office, in city hall, so no tripping falls, nothing falls on them, danger or anything to hurt anybody to keep it convenient soon, is what that's all about. But, but I walked around, I looked around, I haven't seen any safety issues, and I don't know when was the last update that all employees understand why we need the safety to protect the, the town as far as being alive.
Will the county come out and do places like that?
I don't think so. I don't think so much.
Can you see?
There's a lot of places that if you're inclined, that, oh, we will. And places like that. I mean, they have walls of.
We do all kinds of safety training, they go to the county barns, we train all that.
Okay.
Do we get, do we get, how much are, I mean, is there any insurance benefits you can have to have that kind of thing?
It's usually a free training.
Yes, they will come here and, and frame them free.
But, but we do too, so, yeah.
Insurance company?
The what?
Well, the insurance company, I mean, it's that type of insurance.
You know what, I didn't thought, thought about that, but it might, it might be as a discounting to, to your insurance.
Good point. I was gonna actually make that point. I have talked in with the guy who's in charge of safety with O-M-E, his name is Gary, and we discussed it a couple of months, several months ago, and this summer, he's gonna come in and do a safety audit.
Good.
The first thing he can do is a safety audit, to look at all the problems and what needs to be addressed.
Excellent.
And that's through our insurance, and, and, there are access to come in and do a safety audit, and so that'll be probably on next meeting, so tend to, okay, ask him to come on in.
Yeah, that's great.
A lot of things are required. But, but I, I don't understand, meeting for employees, visitors and customers.
I didn't make the motion.
He made the motion. I thought you said. And this is. When you're close, I'm like, yes.
I, I understand the for employees, visitors, and customers. For employees.
Well, the.
It's for the better for the customer.
It will help.
Right, but it's not a meeting for, uh, visitors and customers, it's customer employees.
Yes, yeah.
Do you, for employees to, it says employees to attend, but it is for the better of the employees.
And, 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 for employees, visitors, and.
If, if, if a citizen want to come to a safety meeting to help understand, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, it's all about the town and the people who wait to meet, I mean.
They're.
I mean, I'm not gonna say, well, this is just employees.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. More discussion? Vote. Bailey.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes. I didn't see what you mean, that it says to require, so are we requiring visitors and customers?
It's worded in here.
Okay.
I have a right, discussion and action on sick leave.
Um, sick leave in the Tallahassee employee handbook does not specify family. It just says family. I feel you need to identify family, because today is just family pretends to a lot more just family. I make a motion to, to define the definition of a family member. Employees immediate family or household. For definition of immediate family member, the following is considered a parent, and or step-parent of an employee, spouse, child, stepchild, adoptive child, or any other person whom the employee has legal and or foster responsibilities. In our.
We have a motion. Second. And a second, any more discussion?
Is this the same one for agreement?
It's, I did, yes, it, yes, it is, it's still agreement.
But, but the one we looked at earlier said Barbie and another thing beside was here.
Yes, legal and or foster responsibilities.
Well, then, but. But that's not, but, where, where's those?
This one, I agree, but since I made a motion, can I still talk or it'll be?
No, we're in discussion.
Oh, we're in discussion. On agreement of this other policy that I have, that is, that I went full reference on. A relative is defined as an employee's spouse, child, stepchild, foster child, adoptive child, parents, spouses' parents.
On a tie, please.
Step-parents, grandparents, spouses' grandparents, brother, sister, spouses', brother, or sister, or guardian.
Yeah, but see, like, the spouse's family, and this, this will say the spouse's family also.
No, they'll, they'll draw the line on immediate, because it says immediate family here.
Well, agreement, it says child, stepchild, foster child, foster child, parents.
Are you talking sick leave or agreement?
I'm talking sick leave, but he's bringing, he's coming.
Agreement's different than sick.
Right, that's what, that's what I'm asking. You know, if, if you're step-parents.
You can, you can use, sick leave is for just immediate family, you, your child, not your parents and all that stuff, I mean, it's, you're, same with household, basically. Normally. You can expand it to parents if you want to, that I mean.
Well, that actually includes parents.
But agreement, agreement is extended a little bit further in sick leave.
That's my kind of certification, if they were the same.
Are we cutting it all into one?
No, no.
That's not, no. Sick leave is.
That's how it was meant.
Say, we have a motion.
I second.
Second, any more discussion? Vote. Bailey.
Yes.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Item nine, discussion and action on vacation benefits.
Okay, this was the hardest one. I did some calling out to Spiral and to, um, Lurburton. And Renee already had a lot of this already researched, but vacation, I, I'll tell you what the other town had, I mean, basically, there's a twelve-month grace period of full-time employment. After your first year, you receive five days of vacation. Your second year, you receive ten days of vacation. Your tenth year, you receive five, uh, three, uh, fifteen days of vacation. A lot of these towns is a take it or lose it that year. Simple as that is the way they explain it to us. We have a lot of employees that are like pretty much grandfathers, yeah, there's, there's nothing you can do about that, I mean, unless they go on or something. But as far as future employees, um, in this book here, it's very, very confusing. So, to make it simple and, and from reviewing from other towns, I would like to make a motion that full-time employees will receive a vacation time as follows. After an employee has worked a minimum of twelve months of full-time employment, you will see five days of vacation. Upon your second year, you receive, you will receive ten days of vacation. On the tenth year, you will receive fifteen days of vacation. This policy will be used, used, use it or lose it, yearly policy. Employees must give a thirty-day request for time off with their supervisor.
And we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Those will be, and then existing employees or grandparents. Those will be, uh, and then existing employees or grandfathers.
Right, I've got a list of employees that I've called.
What were you saying?
Is under discussion, sir?
Yeah.
Cause there's a handful.
Yeah. Motion, Barbie.
So how, so I, I guess I don't understand how, how it's gonna work, I mean, just like, uh.
Cause it's totally different for our police officers in the handbook.
I mean, I, I, what I don't understand is, is, is how can you say like us, either use it or lose it whenever? I've got guys that are saying, okay, I'm, I'm off, so what are we gonna do with town? We gonna, we just gonna leave town sitting wide open?
What do you mean, no?
Technically, that's getting it.
You gotta skip, that's why the thirty days come in, they gotta still go through their supervisors and ask all for vacation.
Okay, just for example, just like next week, I'm taking my wife to Ambril cause her dad's sick and, then I know what's going on. So, well, I can't, you know, it's not considered sick, it's considered, we're going out there to see her dad in case something happens.
Oh, you mean the short time?
And this, and this just happened today, so.
Oh, that could happen.
So that's, so a lot out, but I'm gonna get thirty day period.
It don't have to be thirty days, it can be to your, if someone says, hey, next week, man, we got the time, can, you okay? Hey, I don't have. But you gotta have, you gotta have something there.
It's scheduled vacation.
This book here is states thirty, by January thirty first, I close to tell you, when I'm gonna take four weeks vacation?
I can't.
Right. And, and that's kinda the way we work over there, is, is we may not have the money off. And then we may have a couple of days come up and, and Justin might say, hey, I'm gonna work a couple of days.
Hey, handle it.
Okay, I just, I just wanted.
Because he can still, in his handbook, it states you, you use as less than one hour of vacation. All I'm checking, well, but for the new employees, this is something we need to got.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I don't wanna get too, oh, no. Okay, so we're still, okay?
They're having vacation for hard.
Yes. I agree.
Any more discussion?
Gabriel, go.
Ben. Yes, Parker?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Out of number ten, discussion and action on service request forms?
Um, no action on that, I, what, to explain, I reviewed, uh, I had a work request form that was really neat. But when I, I sat with Kent Keith and he showed me his, and, um, you know, he's the one in with it. So I visited with him and we went through a lot of scenarios, and I'm just gonna tell you about no action.
Out of number eleven, discussion and action on new time sheets.
Hey, did anybody give us a sample of this?
Yes. Looks like this is there.
Anybody wanna take a sample?
There's one thing I would like to say about that time sheet. Is that for one week only?
Two weeks.
This is two weeks, right.
Um.
Uh, well. If it's gonna be semi-monthly, it's gonna have to be a little more than two weeks.
We do revise this schedule.
Okay.
Um, one thing that.
Just need to make sure that it's, it's paid daily.
It, was the format good to you on this?
Oh, I like, okay.
Okay, can we just make a motion to use this format?
Where, where do we keep the total, running total?
Uh, vacation and.
Uh, not on vacation.
Yeah, on their time sheet, at the bottom of their time sheet, that's best I know.
But it's not on this one?
If you're a rather overtime.
No, it just says total, it doesn't show what they were retired, and how much it earned during.
Okay. We, we will take care of that, we'll have another sheet or something that, that.
So, we don't wanna prove this, we wanna prove another sheet.
So you, when you want the balances carried forward?
Yes.
Every month?
That will be on there.
And it will be done in the computer system.
Okay.
It will be every month, every time they earn one, uh, hours, it will be added in the system in the shoulder on your paycheck.
No.
No. Be back up there.
I'm from there.
Excuse me.
There are cumulatives, if you guys can come up with it, can be put in the computer. And then we can tell the system to print it on the check stub, what they've got, if they use our check format. I don't know about your current checks. But, but our, our check format, it will literally say sick leave this, vacation this, et cetera, this.
My, my only concern is, when I wanna say a lot of, a time sheet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me tell you what I've done in the past, and it might be just a little extra work. But I always had a sheet for each and for a week that had their vacation, sick, whatever. And it was totaled every year, I mean, every pay period, it was put on that sheet, and it was kept in their personnel file. Okay? It was updated every pay period. And then anytime you needed to go look at it, it's in their personnel file, and it has a running total of all their overtime, comp time, whatever you wanna call it.
Well, I know the existing one looks a little confusing and stuff, but when I looked at it, audited it, and I say that employees use, say, eight hours of comp time.
I would take that right there and say he used eight hours of comp time, I would take that and put it on this, this.
But I wouldn't know here how much he's got.
Why do you care?
Because if he doesn't have eight hours, I can audit, I've audited it right there.
The supervisor.
Looked at three or four places.
Supervisors will have that, that spreadsheet.
Yeah.
And, or it will be updated every pay period. And he, and that, that supervisor will know that if this guy is gonna work eight hours overtime, he, you know, comp time, he don't have, you know. And he wants to do that, he don't have it.
Right, I visited with Keith, and I wanted to make him be totally sure that I truly am not out there to question his integrity. And he, he believes me. And the one other thing I wanna, and he, cause he reassured me too, if I put on his signature on that paper, just his work ethic alone, I have faith in him that he's doing it right.
Right.
The same way I would will, you gotta trust somebody. But if I did question it, I can't, you know, go to the file and check it. But I don't see, uh, uh, I'm not saying it don't happen, but I, I would hope that anybody that signs everything to it and says that he does have eight hours of vacation, he's signing it and he's saying it's okay.
Okay, now, I'm not gonna be contrary, but we all know that in the past.
If you want to add a line up there that says beginning of this pay period, you have this many hours, and at the end of the pay period, you've got this many hours.
But if you have a spreadsheet already, isn't that just kinda?
What I'm, what I'm saying makes you have to go to good places to figure out what's going on to do that.
But not the supervisors and the financial, I mean, that's who the supervisors are proving. And then you're gonna know.
Let's just try to explain this, hey, please. We've had in the past supervisors that put comp times and stuff on.
We're gonna go, living in the past, we're gonna.
What I'm saying is, is, what I'm saying is, have you audited that, unless you look at it and see it, have to have a way to audit it.
Okay.
And it occurred supervisors, I have looked at their time sheets and found mistakes.
Okay.
You know, so, I'm saying, have we looked at this sheet?
That is what I am here for.
That's right, we shouldn't be.
That's, that's.
That's why, and we gotta go paycheck.
You can't micromanage all of that.
There you go, thank you.
Okay, we wanna say micromanaging, but it's not, if we said that last time, and it wasn't getting done, I'm saying, you won't do it, I'm not saying that.
I understand.
Okay, but I'm saying.
And if I'm not, you send me off.
That's exactly right.
I, I do know that I, I visited with ev, most, all the employees one-on-one, and the majority of it is, they, they, they really would like the two paychecks in mind.
Well, that's.
Um, and as far as this time sheet, um, we talked about that issue, and I reassured them what Joanne has explained to me. And they have full faith in the change and what's going on. Now, there might be a few that's questionable, but the majority by far does not have a problem with it because, and, and some of the comments they made, that they will have money to maybe do a little bit more with their family in the middle of the month. Because usually, sometimes they don't. But looking at the employee side of it, we got twenty employees here, if we can't manage twenty employees, shame on us. But we, from the here on, I don't think it would be a difficult plan.
That's what I want. Semi-monthly is just monkey door, okay? Now, but you're gonna have to put those supervisors in charge of the people below them and make them accountable. I mean, if they go in here and start fudging, it's gonna show.
And I'm gonna catch it.
Well, you know, we have three.
Yeah.
Well, four, you, Rodney, Philip and Keith, right?
Yep.
Philip, Philip.
Is on, basically on his own.
He's on his own.
But, but then we can, if that's one we have, anyone we have to observe, we, we can, come on.
Hey, like I said, the supervisor is in charge of it, and he misses it, it's up to me to catch it. And it needs to be done every pay period or at least once a month. If, if you want to put it on the, on that, that time sheet, that this is how much you got at the beginning of the month, and this is what you got with the group for this, this pay period, then we can do that too. But I will have a spreadsheet over here for the supervisors that gives.
Our time sheets already have.
I know, and they're a piece of crap.
So, so if we make it, but if we.
But what I'm saying is, it's harder, I mean.
But if we make it easier for the office.
Yes.
We make it easier for the super, the three, four supervisors, we make employees happy because they want the extra paycheck. It's a no-brainer.
But that's not, one of the, yeah. Do you do the time sheet right now?
Do the time sheet.
But you can't, you can't have a department of one person and letting me as our supervisor, I'm sorry, that just don't work. You need two supervisors, one department and one employee's department. And that you can make accountable. All I got to say about that is.
Yes, uh.
Please don't make the motion.
Okay.
Aren't we going to use this?
Do I make this motion?
Yeah, but make it. Hey, yes.
She said she can put the beginning.
Vacation and.
Here, and this is total.
So, um.
So, that's just the, with two points, do you want to add that in?
Yeah, on the motion.
From overtime to comp time?
Yeah. Okay, I make a motion to accept the new time sheets with a new beginning total and an ending total pertaining to comp time, sick time and vacation time. Nothing, at, at the top. Um, with the balances. And the end of the balance. Pay period.
And then.
If you, if you got it down, sorry.
The motion stated that he wants to add the line above, it shows the balances of these comp, sick, vacations. And then it will be taken away and the endy balance will be down.
The end.
Okay.
And, and to change the pay period from once a month to being paid twice a month on the fifteenth.
Semi-monthly.
Semi-monthly.
Fifteenth and the thirty-first, unless it appears on a weekend or holiday, it moves forward.
If you wanna say the fifteenth, the last working day.
Last working day of the month.
Now, if the fifteenth comes up on a, a weekend, it lives to the fourth day.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I need you to raise your motion.
Okay, I'm, I'm, since what was already said, I'll say, and to change the, make motion to change the, what was that called?
Pay period.
To change the pay period from once a month to being paid twice a month. Semi-monthly.
Semi-monthly.
Semi-monthly on the fifteenth and the last working day of the month.
We have a motion? We have a motion. I'll second that motion, any more discussion?
Could, could you please read, Gina Jones, could you read the motion in the back?
No, does it need to include, is it paid weekends on a holiday or weekend, or paid weekend?
We're not gonna do law provoking.
Yeah.
Does that need to include that?
At the three times.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna.
Okay.
Yeah, it gets to be choppy. With adding compensation time, um, compensation time. Vacation time with the beginning balance, and then at the end of it, the ending balance at the end of the pay period. And then to change the pay period from once a month to be paid twice a month, semi-monthly on the fifteenth and the last working day of the month. It sounds choppy, but that's how it is.
Um, was there something with the sick, sick time and vacation time with the?
We have motions, Ken?
And, and just, and just to clarify, this in the final.
No, we already.
Um, yeah.
Okay. Well, the, the, um, baby.
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
First. Yes. Out of number twelve, discussion and action on budget.
Okay, um, Dawn?
Yes.
Do you have a date of a budget, can we set a time then to have a meeting, a budget meeting?
Set it for two weeks. Set it for a week.
Okay, next week?
I balanced, I balanced water, uh, the PWA today.
Okay.
Yeah, it had seven hundred fifty dollar error in it, so I sent this right to the office, I had to go find it, so I found it. So it's balanced. So the budget's basically ready to go.
So what day next week would this word be available? To discuss the budget?
Probably Thursday maybe?
Thursday would be great.
Thursday, dude?
I'm not sure, I just have to look at my schedule. Go discuss.
Okay.
The budget we're talking about is gonna be the budget for next year, it's gonna be in a new format. Okay? But it will be balanced from end to beginning, whatever. So it's gonna be a little bit different, but it's gonna be to the beginning.
Good.
Yeah.
And the meetings might be which day?
Thursday, Thursday, Thursday.
Okay, so.
Five thirty here?
Thirtyth or the thirty-first?
Thursday.
Tomorrow.
It's a Thursday.
So tomorrow, I need a motion.
I made one.
For, for a meeting on.
Is it the whole budget, our budget there?
Yeah. We're not, they're gonna be a trivia, we're gonna be.
It's a discussion there, yeah.
Well, Jane Jones, so.
Jane, pardon?
We can get started.
It's a start, it's a starting order. Budget is hard work, but you can't just say, okay, here it is, let's do it, no. You have to examine the budget, you gotta make sure it's workable, and then you're gonna have to do a final issue on it. But then you're also supposed to be approving payroll at the beginning of the year. We're gonna present you with a list of payroll expenses for you to approve, and it will be for the next webinars.
Appreciate it a lot.
And we also, he brought up a question here too, uh, he's not gonna say anything, he's a police chief, but. He, he wanted, he wanted to know if, if, uh, direct deposit was feasible.
Do we do that?
I wish.
No, it's public bank.
Direct deposit is what we do on most everywhere.
I get under it, positive work, the spiral bank.
Yeah, we don't care for you banks.
It don't care.
You don't gotta worry, right?
Yeah, all of our employees have direct deposits.
I mean, you, you bank up, you can bank up on city.
We can do it, what they want.
We, 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 that's why we make it two banks because of certain business issues.
Well, I say, I think, I think over that.
Well, there's something they can address and look at that, you know.
Yeah, but that would be great. Don, Don starts putting offshore banking in here now because we, we said it's through one account. It could either be your savings account or your checking account.
And it has to be all of it.
Yes, we can't split between banks now, is everybody gonna stand there?
Yeah.
That's not wanting to bring up as a policy.
Yes. It's just a policy, you have to have a policy to offer it.
Okay. So we have a budget meeting scheduled for Thursday, June thirty, two thousand sixteen, at five thirty. Ken, is there possible, uh, Dawn, for us to get a copy of that before the. Ken, is there possible, uh, Dawn, for us to get a copy of that before the meeting?
What's that?
The budget?
Oh, yeah.
So I can, so I.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so, there's where we're at, we had a motion, but then y'all just all agreed, so I need to know.
I would grow a motion.
Thank you. Out of number thirteen, discussion and action on adding two A D E for the town unified fire department, and Brian, who the. She.
And you gotta, you gotta bitsy results for two, for one A D E, we're asking for two to work with the science lodge and add twenty-four hundred dollars in donations to go toward the final prize.
The two individually, the A D E's are one thousand four twenty-one ninety-six, we can get two for two thousand eight forty-three ninety-two, minus the twenty-four hundred dollars that y'all worked to get, and the total is four forty-three ninety-two that we have to pay out of pocket.
Where does it come from? What line?
What are you talking about?
I'm asking Gina where that four hundred dollars come from, what line?
This one, that's worse. I don't know.
What?
See this, what's it, A D E?
An A D E.
It's the titillator. It's the titillator.
Okay. Joanne, can, can we pay this four hundred and forty-three dollars, do you know if we, we can take this from which line, I don't, you know?
I don't know what line, I look back what it even is.
They count, they count, they're specific.
Well, we, we may, we discussed it, it'll come out.
Uh, I make a motion to approve.
I say.
We have a motion in a second, any more discussion?
Fuck.
Baby, I have to make this. Fuck.
Yes.
Wes. Yes. Out of number fourteen, and this is for the town, um, we have fifty kids coming next Wednesday, y'all have any thing y'all want to do with, do you have any ideas for them for? There's about fifty kids are gonna come next Wednesday at one thirty. Well, basically, do we have anything?
Wednesday.
Yeah, do we have anything that they?
What group is this with?
K D A.
K D A.
Fifty kids.
Can they make up a bargain?
And they paint anything?
I might wanna pick, give us, we know that a few days, let me think, go get some rough areas, and then we could probably figure out where, where we need it the most is where we're gonna put them, not the least.
I just brought this up on our new business, I got an email today.
That would be awesome, okay? Um, I've got some new business, um, I talked about a lifeguards and all that stuff on, on the pool, July first, we're kind of chomping, putting on the boom in the valley, um, a lot of them would love to run, a lot of them would do things, and with this being such a big, big event here in town for you, I told, I would like to be closed, I make a motion to close on July first, Friday, um. So everybody, I mean, July first, fire.
Okay, we have a motion to close the pool on July first, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
On the second, any more discussion?
Yeah.
So.
Sorry, sorry. I need, Crystal, can you check and see if we have anybody?
We already.
Oh, which day?
July first, with me and you are.
No, no, there's no, I just wanted to make sure, I don't wanna take anybody's money and then.
Okay. Okay, so.
What we put that pool license at there?
On July first.
Bailey.
Hold on, we.
Bailey.
Were there, were our license?
Hang on a second.
Women license, go.
That'll be, but, we're. Okay. Fuck.
Well, we can't have four things on at one time, so I wanna clear out some of the discussions before we're sitting here voting on stuff and know exactly what we're doing. Okay?
We're voting on the, uh, closing the pool on.
I'm not waiting for we're done, we're having a discussion.
Well, we shouldn't be, we're in a vote.
That's what I'm trying to figure out here.
We were, we, I made a motion to close, so we're in a motion, and that's the one we're with, it's all my.
I'm second, yeah.
You're the second, and it's. Oh, we're closed, it's, it's closed.
Okay, you guys go. Fuck.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Grayson. Yes, okay, out of number fifteen.
Hopefully, I have one more, I have the same new business, uh, the last day of the pool was August sixth, um, I talked with the kids, a lot of them going back to college, the thirteenth of August, and school starts the nineteenth of August, I would like, uh, I'd like to make a motion to put on a pool party at, and grill, at the, at the pool for the kid, for the employees, and, and with any admissions, they get free grilled hot dogs.
Good. Okay, now.
Now that's.
That is August.
We're gonna make the hot dogs.
Motion.
Yes, it's August.
Wait for a second before we get to that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Yes, Donna.
I have a motion.
Donna, Donna, don't get hot dogs.
Vote.
Yes.
Bailey. Partner.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Grayson. Yes, out of number fifteen, board member comments?
Only thing I have is that the full customer count as of today is seven hundred and forty-three customers, we've been open only three weeks and three days, and today there were eighty-one people at that pool.
Wow.
Oh, we are, we're in a problem.
We're doing very well, trust me, secret.
Out of number sixteen, I make a motion to adjourn.
I say.
In a second, any more discussion? Vote.
Yes.
Fuck.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Yes.